Call the regular City Commission meeting of Tuesday, February 13th, 2018 to order. May we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's just go. I know. Amy, let me call the roll please.
Mr. Kryziak?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Wall?
Here.
First item on the agenda, public discussion. Items not on the agenda. Accountant on your office. Okay. Well, that was... That's good. Okay. Nobody. Next item on the agenda, governmental reports. We have our fire chief. Our esteemed fire chief will go first. It's nice to have you back.
Mr. Mayor, Commission, it's good to be back. Been a little busy in November and December. We had four people walk out the door on retirements, one of which was the fire marshal. So, I quickly became two-headed, wearing the fire marshal and the chief hat, and I'm doing all the investigating, the fire marshal stuff with one of the guys doing all the inspections. We just hired three new people. They just started their 24s, one the other day and one today, and then one tomorrow, after two 40-hour weeks of training. So, we'll have seven new people under one year on, and then I have two positions to fill, and another guy just turned in his paperwork, so now I have three positions to fill. Two vacant, one walking out. He'll be gone by April 9th. But hopefully, our secondary list is already halfway through the testing processes, and that will be hiring those three probably late March or the first part of April.
Did you get enough applicants?
No, that's the problem we're having. My last one, when I hired the three previous to these three, we had 25 applicants, and we have a social event, and all the staff, fire guys and officers get to meet them in HR, and out of 25, we ended up with three that we thought were worthy of clients. So, we used to have one opening. We'd have 100 applicants 10, 15 years ago. Now, we have three or four openings, and we have 25, and they're iffy. And then, even if you pick out a good batch, when you get through background investigations and then you find, the batch gets smaller even quicker. Apparently, OUILs is an acceptable thing to most young people in the working world, and it's like, "Not in public safety." Sorry. You can't be here. But, no, we got some really good people. I'm looking for attitude. So, we got really good attitudes and good work ethic, so I'm really happy with them. I can train them and the rest, but, you know, finding the right people for the right job. The second batch, we hired our second female. So, we have a second female in this batch, and she's a performer, man. She's really kicking butt and taking names, so we're real happy with this group.
Are people just not going into the field, or...
Well, I think 2008 failure, you know, by 2010, everything had clammed up, so I think a lot of people left the state going elsewhere, and there's just not a lot... A lot of fire academies shut down classes. Some of them are only running one every six months, when they were running them almost every three months. And they did day and night classes, and now they're only having one time. So, this last batch I'm hiring, I said, "If you have a paramedic license and no fire experience, we'll send you to the fire academy," because we just need people. And like I said, we can train them, but it's hard to find people, good, caring people that are gonna be there when everything else is going bad for someone. They're there to pick up the pieces.
How large a force do you have?
We have 26 people now, with me and the fire marshal included, so 24 operational people. So, right now, I'm at 22, and soon to be at 21. Again, that's the second time I've done that in less than six months. So, I'm trying not for that to happen, but some of these guys aren't... One decides to go, it's like a disease. They catch a cold. One says, "I'm leaving," and then three walk in and go, "Here's my paper, here's my paper, here's my paper." I'm like, "Well, good luck to y'all. Happy retirement." So, no, it's working out well, though. We're getting them back in as fast as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chief?
Evening, everyone.
Good evening.
To remind the fire chief that Rob and I are both fire-trained.
Uh-huh.
We could maybe leave here and go there and do our 24 hours. Double duty?
You would.
We wouldn't do that.
No.
We wouldn't do that. Just a couple of quick items. With all the recent snow over the past weekend, some things have come to light from citizen complaints, mostly about residents that require to clear their sidewalks. Usually, if the snow falls during the day, within 12 hours of snowfall during the day, and if it falls overnight by 6:00 PM the following evening or so. We got a lot of complaints. People are out of town, and there's companies that come and do it, and things like that. Then there was some issues with, like, people doing it at odd hours that were disturbing to other people, although there is really no stipulation for that, even though we try to do it reasonable hours. But some people get up early for work, and they're doing it for their neighbors, we found, so 6:00 AM. So, hard to yell at people doing good Samaritan work, too, but just try to remind people, try to do it during... Be respectful of people's sleeping habits and things like that. Also, a lot of people are pushing their snow into the street, maybe after brylar has gone by, and I guess if the street isn't plowed, they wouldn't know that you've done that, but you're not allowed to push your snow into the street, put it off to the sides, not in the street, because it's blockading the street. And if we abide by that, it would make brylars' life easier. Also, we don't really... We have a snow emergency. We don't usually declare it, but if you could try to remove your cars from the street to help facilitate the removal of the snow, it makes brylars' life easier and more effective for them to do their job. The other thing, we've been having some issues. That must be slow weeks, that garbage cans are staying out longer than they should be. Just like to remind everybody that our garbage days are Monday, so you're not supposed to put it out till, like, 6:00 PM the previous evening, so Sunday, 6:00 PM, and then you're required to remove those within 12 hours after collection. We've had cans out three, four, five days afterward. Again, people are out of town, maybe the neighbors taking it out or whatever, but just to remind people that those are the rules. Also, that trash is supposed to be in the containers. We have a lot of critters in town. People maybe have a lot, and they fill their containers up, although they're pretty large containers. Then there's bags placed next to the containers, and then animals, raccoons, are getting into those and then causing a mess. If it's overflowing, maybe you could ask your neighbor if they have room. I've been known to sneak some trash into my neighbors or sub to call and tell them when I see them the next time, whenever, rather than putting it out on the side. And that's really all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. No questions? Okay. All right. Okay, let's move on. No other governmental reports? Move on to City Commission liaison reports, starting with Commissioner Kryziak for Ferndale Public Schools.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Ferndale School Board meeting of January 23rd was full of a lot of good news. The Suburban Ford of Ferndale had a drive-for-your-school event. This is something that local members of our community participated in. You go to the Suburban Ford dealer, you do a test drive, and then the dealership contributes to your school district. Well, in partnership with the district, the Suburban Ford of Ferndale raised $3,900 for camp scholarships and other programs in the district. So, that was a great partnership event that the district helped pull off with Suburban Ford. Another update given during the school board meeting was regarding University High School, and one of the issues that they had was losing students at exam time, finals. Many students, by virtue of their disappointing test scores, would, you know, they would fall into a slump. This was identified by teachers, and the teachers' union, and the administration worked collectively to address that, and they came up with an idea called Target Time. And what Target Time is, is it's an enrichment and recovery program. So, if there's an individual who has struggled in a course and has identified as a course failure at the end of the year, they will be involved in this program with teachers to give additional support to try and remediate their failing grades. This past session, there was 158 individuals at the University of High School who were participating in this event, and 67 of those individuals recovered all those failures and achieved passing grades. So, the superintendent identified this as a great partnership between the administration and the teachers to really focus on the individuals in most need of attention, and it's a program that they plan to continue into the future. So, that was highlighted. There is also a celebration of two Ferndale middle school students, Ruby Speedwell, who's in the sixth grade, and Tiana Bartley, who's in the eighth grade. They had their art projects selected to be featured in the 28th Annual Student Art Town Exhibition at the Birmingham Community House, and Tiana's photo submission won second place out of all the middle school students in Metro Detroit. So, that was quite the accomplishment for them. There is also a brief mention, Ferndale Schools received a grant from DTE. I know we've been working with DTE on exterior lighting projects, and the district received a replacement grant of substantial amount, and they installed their LED exterior lights, and they project that their savings will equal $8,600 per year. So, they were excited about that as well. And a final note on upcoming, or what an initial program is, the Ferndale Middle School will now offer Spanish 1A in sixth grade. This move will allow students to reach more advanced levels of Spanish, eventually when they get to Ferndale High School, and potentially earn a seal, a seal of biliteracy on their diploma. So, the administration was really excited to highlight that as well. And there was an invitation, or there was some communication with PR, and Superintendent Dania Bazi will be at our March meeting. She'll be here to talk about the district's strategic planning process and how they're kicking off that and how they will involve residents and people in the district. Dania will be here next month at our meeting to talk about that, so we're pretty excited about that. And speaking of our superintendent, there is a snow day. I think we all kind of wish we all had a snow day on Friday, but the Ferndale District did declare a snow day, and I know some of the commissioners had noticed, and I know a lot of residents had noticed, that there was a unique announcement that the superintendent put out to challenge, to not only announce the good news of the closing for the district, which the kids were overjoyed, but also to remind them that, you know, you can still read on your days off. So, she challenged the district kids to send her a photograph of them reading on their day off with their favorite book, and I thought it was a great idea. I know Commissioner Perry had shared the video, and it was just a really sweet and innovative way to, you know, announce something that the kids obviously enjoy, but also foster a love of reading. So, I asked my fellow commissioners if they could bring their own book, and maybe we could get a picture and send it to the superintendent. I don't know.
Tom?
We actually have our...
Like, right now?
Our de facto Pleasant Ridge photographer here.
I did have to explain to Jason that she had asked people to be reading in their favorite place, and I said, "Well, every time I want to read a book, I come running here to the city hall and get in my chair."
I can't tell you how many times I've happened upon you.
Yeah, just walk in.
This is it. It is so comfortable. There's always water behind me. Life is good.
It's a great spot. But I would ask Tom, would you mind snapping fun of us, with our books? So...
All right, I'll email it.
Thank you, sir. And we'll send that to Superintendent Bazi, and she can add it to the list, but...
Excellent. Hope she doesn't judge our book choices.
Plus, she can judge. Never try to judge.
Yeah, it's far easier than a bucket of ice water.
Yes.
No.
No one can judge.
But, yes, that's all I have this month. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Can you top that? Commissioner Perry, Planning, DDA.
No, but I will start out with my book choice was The Square Donut, which is by a Pleasant Ridge resident, Lauren Crane, who is a wonderful writer, and it's, I guess this is, I have, I've just gotten it, so it is, I haven't read it yet, but I've heard it's a wonderful read, fast, and really enjoyable. So, I recommend The Square Donut by Lauren Crane.
That's cool. It's a resident.
Yeah, she's great. She's also an amazing musician, so she's kind of cool. But, so, actually, so the Planning Commission, DDA, had a very busy meeting in February. On February 5th, they met, and we had a public hearing. I think people will be pleasantly, they will be happy, pleased by this vote that went down, was we had a public hearing for special land use for the Sunoco gas station, and they will, they are now allowed to sell beer and wine to take, to carry off premises. And then, they, and they were, Sonny was saying that it should open up this month. It should start to be...
It's fast.
For sale this month.
Oh, they've been just...
Right. Yeah. The Planning Commission and DDA also appointed their new or revisiting their chairperson, Mr. Tom Troyer, vice chair, Kevin McCutcheon, and secretary, Martha Schlesinger. Then the DDA had, did a lot of work, too. They, they had a really great gathering to sort of celebrate a kickoff to the new year and to really help build community within the, you know, our downtown development, because our downtown is a little bit odd, how it's so long and small. And so, it was nice, because they invited all the Iron Ridge folks and other people who have businesses within the community that might not necessarily be right on Woodward. And so, that was a great gathering. It was at the Mayor Prize Building, hosted by Lee and Charles. Lee, help me...
Lee Hart.
Lee Hart and Charles Dunlop. And then also hosted by Kristy McAuliffe and San Tran from Pitch Black, which is also right there. It's in the Fields Art Studio building. They, they also did, they formed their budget subcommittee, and then also talked about decorative planters. They, there's been an idea that has been put in front of the DDA to start, you know, trying to help different ways of updating sort of the look and making it feel more community or more busy, instead of just someplace that you drive by at 50 miles an hour. So, adding some planters and, you know, with the DDA helping share expenses and things, trying to help make our downtown even more lovely. So, it's cool. And then, when am I forgetting, Jim? Drew, was there anything else? Amy?
No.
It was a busy meeting.
They will be meeting on the 26th.
That's right. So, there's a second meeting on February 26th.
Right, so that's, that should be an interesting one. The DDA, their next big project that they want to take on is the Woodward streetscape. So, updating and freshening the Woodward streetscape. We've started to work towards that with the planting areas around the trees on the street to try to get a little more green, get a little more water in the ground, and just soften it a little bit, but there's a lot more to be done on that, as the streetscape is getting to be close to 30 years old now. So, the meeting on the 26th will be to review the first concept plans. We basically commissioned a scoping study to come up with some ideas, so it might be an interesting one.
Yeah. Cool. Thank you.
Oh, I also wanted to add, other than the fact that the DDA event was a lovely, lovely place, we also had some of the best food I've had in a long time.
Oh, my gosh.
By another one, another Pleasant Ridge...
Komodo.
Yeah, Komodo Kitchen, Dina Onyx, and Tommy, her husband, is over at Iron Ridge, has a place now at Iron Ridge, and so it's quite, it was wonderful, so...
She's so talented.
Everything about it was...
It was really beautiful.
Was really first-rate, and it was all Pleasant Ridge-driven. It was terrific, and it was good to see a lot of the businesses.
It really was.
And just to have the Iron Ridge people very engaged in talking about what their expectations are, it's quite exciting. So, it was a wonderful event.
Yeah, it's been the great thing with this DDA now, is you really see a lot of the work that the staff has done, but the, this DDA group, they want to help really, you know, come together as a community for the businesses and to be there to help move things forward, so it's, it's a good time.
And thank you, Tom, for driving a lot of the DDA stuff.
Yeah.
Perry?
Take the compliment.
Go with it. Okay. Next, Commissioner Scott, Historical Commission.
The book I chose is called The Power of Habit. It's a very interesting read if you, if there are things that you do on a daily basis, and you're wondering what fuels these things that you do, like grabbing a cookie at 3:00 PM instead of an apple, which is kind of one of my favorite habits. It just helps you work through the anatomy of your habits, figure out how to diagnose them, and just work through and make some personal improvements. It also works for projects around the office, when you're working with other people. It's a good read, and it's not a difficult read at all. And there are some really wonderful examples in the book of how the understanding of habits were used to fuel movements around the nation. Didn't have an official Historical Commission meeting in February, although we did have a special one where we worked through some of the issues around the historical plaques that we give out for 100-year homes, and it's amazing if you know nothing at all about poetic tile and pottery, all of the options that are available, and some of the history and the color choices and things, and we learned a lot in choosing the next set of tiles that people will receive when they get their plaques for 100 years. And so, it's just, it's just a nice thing to see that come into place. And if you've not had an opportunity to drive past Davidson Park in the evening, the lighting is installed. The Historical Commission was one of the groups in the city to help fund that project, and it's very beautiful, definitely worth, it's just something to enjoy in the city. Our next meeting is March 7th at the Community Center. Everyone's welcome to attend.
Great, thank you. And Commissioner Wall, Recreation Commission.
So, we met on January 31st, and we discussed the community garden, believe it or not, which is a nice happy thought, you know, with the weather. So, we were talking about how it's sold out, but we're adding additional plaques. I think there's six, they're working adding six additional plaques, so that'll be exciting. But it's exciting that it's, how many? 10? Oh, I just undercut it, 10. So, 10 additional plaques, which is exciting, because it's great that it's sold out and the people are so interested, so I think that'll be great. The Daddy Daughter Dance was a huge success, 40 couples, smash. Charlotte reported. So, it looked good, too, on, you know, the website. We have movie night coming up this Thursday, The Glass Castle. I've actually read that book. It's a true story. It's pretty heavy, but it's good. There's showings at 12:15 and 6:15. Popcorn will be served. What else do we have? We have applications due. If you, if anybody is applying for summer staff or counselors and lifeguards, the 2nd of March is a drop dead date for that. You can apply online. St. Patty's Bingo, the 8th of, the 8th of March, from 6:00 to 8:00. St. Peter Shawnee. Dinner is included. Could it be corned beef? I don't know. And then, of course, the Egg Hump Pancake Breakfast, which is, you know, the 24th, the rec center, 10:00 AM. And everyone will be able to see our new situation back there. A whole new egg hunt. That's all I have.
Very good, thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right. I just wanted to add, from the Daddy Daughter Dance, not being able to go this year, but just seeing the way all the pictures were displayed was wonderful. I mean, it was fun, it was fun just to go through the pictures.
To watch it.
Kind of remember how it was, you know, and just to see the smiling faces, it was great. Well done. Okay. Next, Consent Agenda. We only have two items, not much to consent to, but do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Your honor, I move that the Consent Agenda be approved. Sorry.
Always worry about that.
It's gonna die, sorry.
Any discussion questions? Can we have a back question?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Kryziak?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, Mr. Perry. Next item, establishing public hearings on Tuesday, March 13th, 2018, at 18:00 at 7:30 PM to solicit public comments on the following ordinance amendments. Stick with me. A, Amendment to the Pleasant Ridge City Code, Chapter 14, Building and Building Regulation by the addition of Article 7, False Alarms. Amendment to the Pleasant Ridge City Code, Chapter 34, Nuisance, Article 3, Section 34-52 by the addition of a new Section 13 regarding storage of unlicensed automobiles. C, Amendment to the Pleasant Ridge City Code, Chapter 70, Traffic, Section 70-21, Violation and Penalties Regarding OUI Cost Recovery. And D, Amendment to the Pleasant Ridge City Code, Chapter 70, Section 70-86, Notice and 70-87, Failure to Pay Regarding OUI Cost Recovery Collection. Either Jim or Greg gonna just give us a little bit of background?
I'll give you a little bit of background on these. These are all ordinances that have been requested by the police as they've just gone through their daily business, and of course, some of these are in response to some changes in state law that occur from time to time. And of course, Greg knee wrote these up, so I'll give the introduction, and then we've got Chief Nowak and Sergeant Reed here, who can talk to some of the reasoning behind the ordinance request, and then Greg can talk to any questions about the legal questions about the ordinances themselves.
Okay.
With that, the False Alarm Ordinance, this is something that the police have dealt with in limited instances in the city of frequent and recurring false alarm runs that they get. It's a drain on public resources when, you know, we have finite number of police here, and when they're responding over and over again to false alarms. The purpose of this ordinance is to try to incentivize people to fix the problem or to, you know, address the underlying issue through some penalties or, you know, potential penalties, as opposed to us just continuing to go. There's also some other standards in the ordinance for audible alarms. We have a couple situations in the past where businesses in particular have had alarms that were audible, they're tripped at 4:00 in the morning when somebody's delivering something, and then, you know, that's a nuisance to nearby neighbors who have to, you know, be awoken at that early hour because of an alarm going off. So, there are some provisions in there that deal with basically information and noticing so that we know who to get involved of to, you know, get it shut off.
Shut this down.
Yeah. And then to be able to deal with that if it's a recurring problem. Unlicensed vehicles, the, we also have a somewhat recurring issue. It's not frequent, but it does recur periodically in the town, in town of people accumulating unlicensed or inoperable vehicles on private property. In a town like Pleasant Ridge, where we have 50-foot lots, 40-foot lots, this can become a blighting influence on the nearby neighbors. So, this would add a specific provision in the ordinance for unlicensed vehicles. Currently, we have some general nuisance standards, which we have been using to write this, but it's better to have these specific standards in place. And this does exclude an unlicensed or inoperable vehicle that is in your garage. So, if you have a project car, if you have a classic car, if you have something, as long as it's in a garage, that's fine. We just don't want them in your backyard, or, you know, on the street, or other places. So, Brett, you're okay. Michigan Vehicle Code violations and penalties. This is housekeeping, to keep our local ordinance consistent with Michigan Vehicle Code, Section 257, 625, which is recently amended. And then we also have Section 70-86 through 88, cost recovery for prosecution expense. This adds cost recovery provisions for legal services incurred in the prosecution of traffic offenses, covers costs for operating while intoxicated or under the influence, but it's not limited against civil infractions such as speeding, failure to stop, impeding traffic, et cetera. So, your garden variety, traffic, civil infractions, this isn't going to impact. And the reason for this is oftentimes, when we have OWI or OUI, our city prosecutor does have to get involved with an actual trial, so there are extra costs that the city incurs on that, so it's a pass through. And there's also some small revisions in Section 786 and 7-87 to change references. We have references in there with the city finance officer, and we haven't had them. We outsourced that 10-plus years ago. So, again, that's housekeeping. It just changes those references to the city manager, as we need. So, with that, I would be happy to forward any of your questions to Chief Nowak, Sergeant Reed, or City Attorney Neve.
Are there questions? We are hoping.
Mayor, I would just ask, yeah...
Chief has me fielding this this evening.
Okay, all right. You've been here many years.
17.
17, thank you. Didn't want to guess wrong.
No problem.
It was a lot. Over the course of those 17 years, how many, is it a common occurrence for you to have to go have that Over the course of those 17 years, how many, is it a common occurrence for you to have to go have that conversation with a homeowner about a disabled vehicle or a nuisance vehicle? I'm just trying to get a gauge on how often this is something you guys have to deal with.
It's fairly rare.
Okay.
In my 17 years, I've dealt with it maybe six times, seven times. Officer Nagy's probably dealt with it about the same. As the city manager pointed out, when they're in a structure, it's not a big deal. It's usually when the neighbors are calling saying, hey, you know, this is a nuisance. It's been sitting there, there's nothing going on. But it's, that one's a fairly rare one.
Okay. I'm just curious, when that conversation has taken place, how does the homeowner react? I mean, is the homeowner defensive? Is the homeowner understanding as far as, okay, I get this, I'm gonna correct without, you know, penalty or?
It's usually take, actual tickets that have been written to that over the years we're talking.
Right.
Less than five, I'm guessing.
All right.
I mean, in the past 10 years, I can't remember doing any actual tickets, but actually going and speaking to people about it six or seven times, I'd say that I've done. But it's usually corrected. We actually just had this happen maybe a month and a half ago. He wasn't home, sent a letter, said, hey, you know, this needs to be an issue that was resolved, needs to get resolved. And it was donated within a week or two, so. And that's a lot of it. Sometimes it's just a push to get them to deal with it, you know?
Right.
He had said that he was waiting to donate it, so.
And you, I guess I'll ask your opinion then. You just feel like the additional language of actually calling out the vehicles as a nuisance will help you as far as having those discussions instead of having it just a general nuisance?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. It just, it makes it a whole lot easier when it says automobile.
Right, cool. All right.
Any, on the, any of the others, I can, I can kind of clear up on the operating while intoxicated amendments. It deals with enhancement for second offenses. We can charge those now, however, I would have to go to the Oakland County Prosecutor's Office, bug them and say, hey, could you please issue a warrant for this? Go through that whole process. This just kind of streamlines it where we can take care of it easily in district court under our city code. But I think the other things, city manager, pretty clear, so.
The part in answer your question, Commissioner Kuzier, a lot of things that come into play with the vehicles. And I've had several in my 11 years or so here. Other issues predicate also the storing of the unlicensed vehicle or things like that. There's, you know, the building is in disarray, railings, the gutters, things like that. And then the vehicle comes into play too. So then sometimes that homeowner becomes maybe overwhelmed with some of the issues that they've let go overall and the vehicle just is part of it. Then adding this enhancement to vehicle helps facilitate the person that is reluctant. Because we've had people like that that's reluctant. And without that, then there isn't anything that we can enforce that way. So like when, for instance, on Maplefield, there were several instances where with the flood, a lot of the debris got thrown into the backyard along with the cars on top of these unlicensed vehicles or whatever. So let alone the debris and everything from the basement and the trash on top of the vehicles. And then some of them, they wanted to get rid of the trash, so they pulled the vehicles out of the garage. Another vehicle sat and all that trash was placed in the garage that they never got rid of for a year. Which created problems.
Yeah.
So that just enhances our ability to enforce that better. It is, it is probably one of the rare of the things that happen, but I've had it several times myself also. So it all depends who's working and what their memory and things like that. And the Clemis records only go back so far to check with that. And in regards to the false alarm thing, I thought of something. Clemis just instituted a way to track false alarms. And you're familiar with the Clemis reports because this is a widespread thing in the multi-county area. So with them creating that ability to do that as a separate way to track, it's not just here.
Right.
It's everywhere. And some of it is, the alarms are faulty. Like a resident, I won't say where he lived or whatever, but he was just in to report that he corrected it because he had wireless sensors and he needed hardwired sensors. Some of it is animals creating, so the sensitivity needs to be adjusted. But there are homes here in town that we've been to 20, 30, 40 times.
Really?
That false alarms.
Wow.
Some of it is because they don't want to repair their antique rear door and the lock doesn't lock, so the wind blows the door open and the alarm goes off.
I thought you were gonna say antique system.
No. Yeah, somebody was ringing a bell.
It's historic.
It's a dog.
So, yeah. So that is that instance. So when Clemis institutes just a separate area for keeping track of it, it's, it's a problem.
Yeah, that they recognize that kind of problem.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Mayor, can I just ask real quick?
Yeah.
Are you got, this is just, this may be off topic or may add to our understanding of the issue. Are you required to respond to a private alarm at a household? I mean, what is our, as a city?
We respond to everything.
I appreciate that.
We respond to medicals, alarms, any call that comes into the police department. We had one this morning, someone was stuck in their driveway. Officer Heffield and I went and got them unstuck from the driveway.
Okay.
We respond to everything.
I know you do. I'm not, I'm, that's not what I guess, I would never assume otherwise. But what I'm saying is, in a, in a legal sense, are we required to answer private homesteads' private alarms?
Yes, I would believe so.
Okay, all right. We can.
I would assume so, I can answer that definitively, but.
I mean, I just, if there's an arrangement between you and the homeowner as far as, you know, an agreement that you would, or do, do the homeowners have to get on a list? I mean, or do you guys just listen or how, or does that go to the dispatch?
And the way the alarm company works is the alarm company gets an alarm and they telephone the police. Sometimes they telephone the homeowner first. And then the police, which we've addressed with suffered alarm companies saying notify us first because
Right.
An instance at the whistle stop, which was Mays', they'd call the owners who would be there. I walked in on the owner of Mays', walking around, he's walking around with the gun inside of Mays', and then I get there. Because they called the police after they called the homeowner and he lived right down the street, which could have been a bad incident. So he says, don't do that, call the police first.
Yeah.
Homeowner, you know, owners don't need to respond to alarm calls where they could be put in harm's way.
Yeah.
As far as, in the old days, the alarms used to be in the police station. The bell or the light or whatever would go off and the dispatcher would go, hey, go to that house. And that's how it worked in the old days. So yes, like the police usually are required to go on alarms.
I don't want to thank you guys for clarifying that for all the criminals who are there watching this broadcast. You guys will be answering every alarm. You will be there, so thank you.
Criminals watch.
It's one of their favorite, one of their favorite shows.
Like your chair is one of their favorite.
You'd be amazed what our viewing, the demographics of our viewing audience.
I'm not aware of any police department that would not respond.
Yeah.
I don't want to live there.
Well, I mean, I think it's just, it speaks to our commitment to our residents that after 20 or 30 nuisance calls that we're still answering that 31st call. I mean, that's our duty and that's your duty.
I'll tell you the biggest violator of that moved on years ago.
Okay.
I mean, that was one where we may be there 15 times in a week.
Okay.
Wow.
And that person no longer lives here and was addressed.
Okay.
So you're finding, are you finding any particular problems with like the newer systems that are being put in? Like things we should avoid as homeowners putting systems in?
No, I think it's gotten better over the years with the sensitivity, especially with the animals in the house. I mean, we're getting less false alarms, which is good.
That's great.
I think the systems are getting better. And people are getting alerted and they have, you know, on their phone where they're actually seen inside their house. And they may not contact us because they're like, no, everything's good, so.
Thank you for clarifying.
Did you say we're live streaming?
We are.
So criminals could just kind of send us a little note just saying?
That's right.
Don't worry, we have a lot, we're ready.
We're going elsewhere.
Any other questions?
I have a question for Greg regarding, this is regarding the first one, the false alarms. There was a, there was a fee and a fine section. Now, what were those? What's the difference between them and what, what is what?
The fine applies to, once you have, you get three free shots. After the third false alarm, then you are fined on an escalating scale as shown in the ordinance. The penalty section at the end is just a general ordinance penalty. That could include somebody with an audible alarm not filing with the police department. It could include somebody who had five false alarms and thus deemed malfunction or whatever and that didn't get repaired. So that would cover the other parts of the ordinance. Or somebody engaging in the alarm business without a proper license, you know, etc., a homeowner. So those would be instances where the civil infraction fines at the end go.
Okay. Thank you.
And one other thing, just a question that come up as to whether this licensing part of this ordinance would apply to a homeowner. That was not the intent and when this comes back next month, we're gonna add a sentence that indicates that it does not apply to a homeowner installing an alarm on their own property. It's meant to regulate the business, alarm company businesses and require that they have proper licenses under state law.
Any other? You're okay?
Yes.
Still look like you have questions.
No, so does that mean that then if like a homeowner puts the alarm in and if it consistently goes off and everything, they'll still be fined?
They'll still be fined, right. Right.
All right.
It just didn't have to be licensed.
This don't have to be licensed.
It's just like, you know, construction of your own home, if you're doing it yourself, you know, you, you can do that without having a license contract.
You don't have to be licensed to put your gas thermostat in or your ring doorbell.
Okay, good. Which I want to do, so.
Anything else? Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, if there's nothing else, can I have a motion to schedule a public hearing on Tuesday, March 13th, 2018? These ordinances, please.
Mayor, I move that a public hearing be scheduled on Tuesday, March 13th, 2018 at 7:30 PM to solicit public comments on the ordinances listed above.
Is there support?
Support.
Need further discussion? Okay, may we have a vote please?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuzier?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Commissioner Carries. Now we move on to the city manager's report.
Okay, I have just a couple of things. We'll start out with some good news. On Friday of last week, Scott was able to sled through the snow to get downtown at 8:00 in the morning.
Aww, yay!
Parks and Recreation, where we received our award from M. Parks, the Michigan Parks Recreation Association. We have the design award for Gainesboro Park.
Hey!
This is the exclamation point on a million dollars, I guess. We will be hanging this at the community center with all of our Parks and Recreation swag.
Yay!
Very cool.
As we sort of talking about community gardens, one other thing that's kind of incomprehensible right now in a way, but will soon be coming up is construction season. So we just want to update the commission and the residents that we released the bids for the reconstruction of Ridge, Indiana, and Bermuda. That was posted today. We received the plans yesterday. And just want to point out a couple of highlights, no need to turn off the lights for these. But on Ridge, one of the things that we're doing, as you may recall, a couple of years ago, we did a test of the, of a traffic calming mid-block crossing at Ridge where the crosswalk is for the school. So down just north of the Ferndale city limit. And we're gonna make that permanent. It's gonna look pretty much like this.
Cool.
So that'll be a traffic calming measure to try to slow the cars, cars down where we have all the little kids crossing the street there.
That's great.
So yeah, that'll be a nice improvement. And we've met with the school about this and they're very happy about it. So we've talked about, you know, snow clearing and all the other things and the kind of dilapidated galvanized steel chain fence that's there. We've talked about replacing that at the school. So we'll make that whole area look a little bit nicer with this and hopefully slow down the cars as well. On the east side, at Sylvan, we're also redoing Indiana and east side residents. And most residents probably know that all of the cross streets that go across Indiana are concrete through Indiana except for Sylvan, where that whole intersection is asphalt. And Sylvan is concrete on either side. So Indiana will be redone with asphalt as will Ridge. And so the only intersection that's gonna be redone is Sylvan. We're gonna redo that intersection in concrete so that you'll have a continuous concrete drive along Sylvan through there. And we're gonna be putting in some decorative touches. So this is an example, we're gonna use some colored concrete.
That's cool.
Just to, just to highlight the intersection. So the crosswalk where it goes along the four sides of the intersection will be a colored concrete. It's not gonna be stamped, it's not gonna be decorated with shiny concrete, just a red to contrast the transition between the asphalt and the concrete on Sylvan. That's probably our busiest intersection on the east side. It's the only four-way stop on the east side. So hopefully this will control some of the people who tend to blow the stop sign there and, you know, slow the cars down a little bit. Other questions? Yes, we are redoing Ridge, we are redoing Indiana and Bermuda and asphalt. The reason for this is partly cost. It's mostly cost. One side benefit is that the time to reconstruct an asphalt road versus the time to do a concrete road is much, much faster. So these are important streets. Obviously, they bisect both the west side and the east side, so we'll be down for less time. The curbs are in great shape. We can fix a very small portion of the curbs and keep the existing curbs we have. And so we will be using asphalt on these. We understand there's a desire in some to do concrete everywhere, but for these, for these streets, asphalt will be the name of the game. We will be continuing things like the edge striping. We put that in on Ridge a couple of years ago, again, to try to visually narrow the street and slow traffic down, so that'll be part of the project. And of course, trees and some upgraded sidewalk crossings where we need to do some ADA accessibility improvements. So the detectable warning plates that have little bumps on them, we don't have those at some intersections, those will be installed where needed. So we're looking to get that done this summer with the school on Ridge. These need to be summertime projects while school is out. Obviously, there's a lot of school traffic that uses Ridge every day to get in and out of the school. So these will be happening during the summer. Bids will be due back at the end of this month and we'll be bringing this to you for consideration of approval of the winning bid at the March meeting.
Great.
That's this year's construction project.
Cool.
Excellent.
Good.
Any questions on anything?
How's the permeable asphalt doing in the Kensington alley? Holding up pretty well, right?
It's holding up great. Yeah, we haven't, I mean, we haven't had any issues with it. Continues to work, so.
Do you see a difference with the drainage and everything?
In Kensington?
Yeah.
The alleyway? Absolutely.
Great.
Yeah. Yeah, we used to get standing water there and that was a big problem with why that particular alley was so bad. Yeah, so far so good.
Cool.
Excellent. Thank you. Does anyone?
Anything else?
Any other questions? Comments? So, okay, we move on to other business. Who's got some other business? Jefferson's got some other business.
I just want to take this time to thank my colleagues on the city commission tonight for playing along and bringing their some very interesting books. So thank you for that. Here's another book. This is a very powerful book. This book came out, I think, two years ago. It is, it's really affected me and I know others who have read this book recently have commented on it. It's called The Underground Railroad by Colson Whitehead. It won the National Book Award, I think the Pulitzer Prize. In my mind, it's very deserving. So we'll be talking about this book tomorrow, Wednesday, February 14th at 7:00. I know it's Valentine's Day and I know this isn't the most romantic topic.
It's red.
It is red, thank you. But it's a great book and if you can't make it tomorrow, please, if you come across this book and you have some emotional space in your life, I highly recommend it. The next book for March will be Unconventional Leadership, What Henry Ford in Detroit Taught Me About Reinvention and Diversity. This is by Nancy Schlitt, Schlitting.
Nancy Schlitten.
Easy for you to say.
Schlitten.
Schlitten?
Schlitten.
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize for butchering that. By March, I will have it down. She's